Guys, we're running a little late this morning.[250.16][250.16](Laughter)[251.16][251.16](Laughter)
And open. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnor and Governing Body of all other Special Assessment and taxing districts for which said Board SOAX is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And Supervisor Finnegan will lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of new employees today. Seeing none, we will move on. Report of many actions from closed session, County Council.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Any deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members to the agenda at this Bearing none, we will receive brief reports from the Supervisors. Supervisor Finnegan, you will start, please.
Sure, and I will keep it brief this time.
Sure.
Focusing on two main meetings instead of all the local meetings that we all attend. Participated in the Regional Council Rural Counties Meeting, Board of Directors, and the majority of the meeting was discussing the budget issue. And some of the games had been playing and played in Sacramento regarding Republicans not being part of the solution. And then, of course, we focused on what the budget was that was passed by the Democrats that was then deemed by the Controller not to be a budget, so stopped paying them. Anyway, after about an hour and a half, two hours of presentation, everybody's BlackBerry went off and it was, oops, the Governor's gonna make a speech here in five minutes, and he says I'm vetoing it. So it was like, never mind.[418.56][418.56](Laughter) And I sort of feel like to comment any further on the budget or AB 109 would be the same thing. I'd be wasting your time because within the next few hours, there will be an update on what exactly is in the budget, which has changed probably drastically from the press conference yesterday. And so until there is a bill before the legislature, we really won't know what's there, other than the same old concerns. Then I also had another meeting that was with Regional Council Rural Counties, the State Association of Supervisors, CSAC, and the Forest Service, the Regional Forester, Randy Moore, as well as Mike Chappell and some of the other high-ranking people in his administration. The basic focus was, and he used the word cooperation, he used coordination, but the basic premise was communication. And he has pledged that there will be a new way that the Forest Service deals with counties, that counties will be a government partner, they will not be treated as the general public, that they do have a stake in what's going on, and we can actually help facilitate what the Forest Service needs to accomplish on our landscape. And so it was a breath of fresh air. It has, we knew from Jay Jensen at the Secretary's level in Washington, has come all the way down to the regional foresters, and now it needs to go onto the forest and to the managers of those forests. But I think you'll see an MOU coming out, but the whole tone and tenor of the communication from the regional forester is that we are partners in what is gonna happen. It has to do with economic development, it has to do with fire safe planning, it has to do with biomass, it has to do with economies, it has to do with roadless areas, and in general, the management of the forest, there will be better communication, and we will be part of that process. So that was great news. So it's heading in a good direction. Other than that, just a little aside, can't help myself here, when I had the opportunity to be in Sacramento, I was sitting grabbing a sandwich, and on the other side of the wall, the glass doors, was the Governor with a half a dozen people, and they were some analysts and some people that were consulting him as well as the Speaker. On the inside, next to me, were people that thought that they were more important in the process, making jokes about the people at the tables, saying that if he thinks he's gonna broker a deal, well, he better get Bill Clinton or Willie Brown involved. And somebody'd come out and say, well, he's getting pushy. And I guess what I'm trying to say, it was obvious that the people on the inside, who are obviously from the other party, were intent that because they were not consulted, and it would not be their deal, while they had been offered the opportunity to be consulted, it was never gonna happen. And they were more intent on embarrassing this person than they were on doing what you and I and the rest of the constituents need to have happen, which is a budget. It was worse behavior than I used to see in the high school cafeteria.[611.29][611.29](Laughter) And I don't know how else to explain it, but that is what's going on in Sacramento. Next time you go to the polls, remember that little anecdotal story. Next.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes, well, I've been 12 days on the road out of this last two weeks that we were, that we've met, and I had my first Coastal Commission meeting, it was three days long. The meetings start at eight in the morning and would go until, one meeting went until 10:00 in the evening, and the other went until 9:30, and then the other one only went, the Friday meeting only went until about 2:30. So it's really intense, and I'm pretty much accustomed to being a lone vote here every now and again, and I can announce that I was a lone vote on one of the Coastal Commission issues on a continuance item. And didn't, that didn't bother me. I've done, I've started having what are called ex parte communications with people who have issues before the Coastal Commission and have learned, I'm learning that process of the reporting that needs to be done. At first, I wasn't going to do that, I wanted to get my feet on the ground, and then I went, you know, I have the grit to be able to do that, and so I decided I'm going to do that, and it's been incredibly informative. I have, am also accustomed to being probably a little left of center, and at the Coastal Commission, probably my fellow Commissioners saw me right of center at our last meeting because there was a primary issue of what they're, what they're referring to as unity of interest, which means that if you own property, you own several APN numbers in a row and you want to develop it, they can identify that as that you have a unified interest in that property, therefore, they could let, limit development on one of those APN numbers or two. And in this case, the person was involved, there were five lots, and they were claiming that the unity of interest would allow that person, that they could, that Coastal could actually come in and say, well, we're only going to let you to put two houses on those lots rather than the five that APN numbers. And so I was arguing hard and strong about property rights, which was very interesting to, to the folks that were there because it was pretty much, people didn't want to see this development happen. And so I'm learning an incredible amount, and I think for our community, I'm going to learn a lot because it is, for instance, they dredge in Southern California in the ocean itself, take the sand and then spread it on the beaches, and nobody's worried about the dredge material that they're pulling out of there and what animals they're taking out with the dredge, and all the issues that we have to address in relationship to dredging our harbor, it's not being addressed the same way. So I think that in the long run, what's gonna happen for our community is that as I get deeper and deeper into this, I'm going to possibly see solutions for us to make this process not so arduous. So that's pretty exciting. And I, after I returned home for a day, I then left with the Job's Daughters girls, and we spent a week with them on the road, and then a giant meeting with 3,000 girls that were just, are beautiful young women and learning to be leaders and learning to be responsible and respectable, and it's just, it's such a glorious place to spend time with. So that's what I've been doing the last two weeks.
Thank you. Supervisor Sullivan?
Had a meeting with, with Randy Hooper, one of the planners from the Community Development Department, and some constituents that live on South Bank Road regarding the rock quarry on North Bank Road, and they had some concerns on noise. Hopefully, on the reissue, the permit, we'll be, you know, a little bit of compromise going forward. And attended my son's end-of-school-year barbecue at Mary Peacock. He had a great experience, he had Mrs. Webb and Mrs. Thompson as teachers, and they do a great job at the school. Had a two-by-two meeting with State and National Parks, which Supervisor Hemmingson had found out some of the projects coming up regarding to state and national, and also discussed some of the budget issues State Parks is dealing with as well as everyone else. Had a meeting with several people in the community, it was a California Endowment meeting out at Smith River regarding activities beginning to happen in the school district and some successes they have had. Spent, had another meeting with constituents regarding concerns they had on the Coastal Commission's decision regarding the Rancharia subdivision. And then, lastly, attended a company meeting with my, my son up in Oregon this last week, so.
That's it. Thank you, Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, participated in action summary after the last board meeting that we had. Had an RC and D meeting on Smith River, and there's quite a little bit of concern over Fish and Game restricting some of their grazing leases. They, they've had pretty good areas that, that they were using for grazing, and they keep cutting them down and cutting them down to where they're fairly small now, so there's some big concern on that. So hopefully, they'll get together with Fish and Game and see if we can't get something fixed there. As Supervisor Sullivan said, we had a meeting with Parks, we had some discussion on, I can't remember what the road, Beach.
Oh, down Cloud.
Yeah, South Beach, is it called South Beach Road?
I think it's the, I don't have it exactly.
Anyway, they've got some real concerns on that road, whether they're gonna be able to repair it or keep it repaired, whether they're gonna be able to keep it open. Also, that's National Parks, and then State Parks, we did have some discussion on, on the Walker Road issues. Hopefully, we can get those resolved. That's, that's gonna be a real problem as summer, as summer goes on, so hopefully, we can get something going there. I was, it was nice that David mentioned about that Forest Service RC RC meeting. I was involved with, over teleconference, I got into it late, it was very difficult to hear and very hard to understand what was going on. I did get a, I did get a chance to look at the MOU, or MOA, might be an MOA. We'll have to go over that a lot more thoroughly, I think, to make sure that it, it doesn't put us in that cooperating agency mode rather than the coordinating mode, so I wanna make sure we get that, that right. We also had a, we had a video conference, or I was involved in a video conference with Northwest California Regional Resource Conservation and Development meeting that we just finished up from our meeting that we had before. It went too long before, so we had some items to finish up on, which were not of great consequence, but we got those taken care of, and that was it for me.
Thank you. We are briefed today. I attended Air Quality Management District meeting in Yreka last week. Also, have been doing some follow-up on some light issues in our county. That will be a never-ending problem, but also met with Kevin Hamlin, Director of CDD, on some future agenda items. And did agenda review for this meeting today. Here we are, and we'll move right on, yes.
There was one other thing that Supervisor Sullivan brought it up, was the rock quarry on North Bank Road. I did speak with a couple of constituents on that that live clear over on South Bank Road, and evidently, that crusher is starting up earlier than it's supposed to, and it, somehow, that noise transfers across the river and really is loud evidently. So I don't know if there's something that we can do about that, or, or make sure, I don't know if that's a court enforcement issue, or some sort of the permitting thing, but I know that's gotta be irritating when something fires off at 5:30, five or 5:30 in the morning and sounds like that.
I have to say, I also had a complaint from someone that lives across the river, said that it shakes his house when that rock crusher starts in. And I wanted to add also that I did attend the high school graduation, I had a grandson that graduated, and a grand, a great-grand baby's baby shower, my second one this year. We're early for, I guess we'll just go to public comment. Members of the public may address the Board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you are addressing the Board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Richard.
My name's Richard Miles, I'm a resident of the county and the city. Saturday, I got a, made my coffee and went outside, got my Saturday's Daily Triplecut. I'm gonna make some comments that probably won't win me a lot of friends today, but I really don't care. I would hope a number of my county employees would look at the unemployment rate in Delnor County and appreciate the jobs they do have. I would also hope that they would look at the number of people who are unemployed or are like me and have a fixed income. As somebody on Social Security, I haven't got a cost of living raise in a number of What really bothers me was some of the comments made by their union rep. And I'll tell you why. As a state and as a nation, we all need to look at cutbacks. Then there was a comment about how my Board of Supervisors give themselves a cost of living raise. Well, I'm aware of the number of hours that you people have to take before you come to these meetings, and I believe you deserve the raises that you give yourselves. But what really bothers me.
You're directing him.
What really bothers me. What really bothers me is something that I witnessed last week. And if their union rep really wants to ask a giving questions, they should ask why one department had.
Richard, I'm gonna interrupt you. Would you like to save this for that agenda item, being so you're?
Will you give me more time?
No, I noticed, the reason I'm cutting you off is I know she didn't start your timer, and I thought, I didn't look at the clock, and, and you could save this for discussion of the public hearing.
Oh, okay, I'll sit down.
He was timed, it just isn't showing up up there.
Oh.
He had 20 seconds left.
Oh, oh, you were almost done anyway, I should've let you go, Richard.
I get another lap.
Do we have any, and, yes, if, I would like to go back and correct him. We, since I've been on this Board, and I think everyone else, we have never voted ourselves a raise. That has been some information that was put out there, and I have never voted for a raise. So I just wanted to clear that up. You can't comment back to me, Richard. Any other public comment at this time? Yes.
Three minutes. I know how you feel about feeling like a stepchild when you attend the meetings and they really don't wanna hear from you, but they have to ask you. Okay, here I go. I gave you the agenda for the minutes of your meeting back in 2006, at your last meeting with the city. That was May 22nd, 2006, in here where it said Mr. Barnes would be paying for $2,000, or would be paying for expenses for the wastewater treatment plant. He was also gonna alter the two main portions of the plant, the improvements will need to be made over an extended period of time, and various components of the system, a mitigation fee of $2,000 will be collected with every building permit for this project. Each site, half complexes will also pay the $2,000 mitigation fee. Then, I'm reading the paper, and here we have the county. My county is gonna put in pipes for water pollution control. I'm a retired nurse, and all the cancer you have up here is just incredible. Here we have Molly Ann McCarthy, born in 1965.
Dead.
Tiffany Anne Smith, born in 1975, dead. Johnny Young, dead. This young woman, dead. Help prevent use of carcinogens, pesticides in California. They're putting new pesticides on strawberries. I like sugar on mine, quite frankly, but now you get a new pesticide. Dead, dead, young people. Oh, there's a friend of mine, Mike, he's dead. His wife is a wonderful RN at Center Hospital, except she had a heart attack, she's not there anymore. She came home and Mike started peeing all the time, he said, what's wrong with you? She says, let me check your blood glucose, because whenever your blood glucose goes high, your blood sugar is high, your body, you urinate a lot, try to get rid of it. And lo and behold, his sugar was high, went to the doctor, he gave him some medicine, but it wasn't diabetes, it was pancreatic cancer, he died in three months. This wonderful woman, if she was ever your nurse, I know you'd wanna do anything you could for her. Mike died, she had a heart attack, and now her house is being foreclosed on. They were married 39 years, and she has a broken heart. Anyway, Mr. Barnes, the city engineer, he wants $200,000 for the sludge fund, he doesn't know what to do with all this sludge. I don't really think you guys are gonna put those pipes out there for water pollution, I think you're taking them out to Mr. Barnes' property for him, we're gonna pay for that. We paid for his water wastewater treatment plant, now we're gonna pay for the pipes. And then when I was reading this, the EDOC, no, CDBG, all these acronyms, it said that we're not even gonna test the water, we're gonna use previous tests to see what was happening. Silly Sally, the ice cream lady, she has 30 days to live, she's dying of cancer.
You need to wrap, wrap.
Okay, if this goes into the, let's check for the water pollution. Mr. Barnes, he's the county engineer, he's the city engineer, he is the owner of this summer park place, he's getting funding from the EDOC or whatever, from the HUD people, from this Hodgson, that's coming up in your agenda back here.
Thank you.
It's not fair, he has two jobs, Bob Black has two jobs, Eric Taylor has two jobs, some people don't have any jobs.
Thank you. Have any other public comment at this time? Dave?
I can take it at the timed item if you prefer.
If you would like, if it's, that's coming up next.
Okay, I just wanna read you a short statement from one of our members who can't be here today because he's working. Dear Board of Supervisors, in making your decision about cutting hours and services by 12 and 1/2 percent, I wanted to share with you my own experience and how these cuts would affect me and my family. This year, I experienced the 5% cuts from furloughs. I want you to understand what I am sacrificing with this 5%. I am a single dad with two little children trying to make ends meet and keep food on the table. Recently, I had to decide between making my car payment and keeping the lights on for my family. I am now biking to work. I am an insulin-dependent diabetic. I cannot buy medication because I cannot afford it, even with my insurance. At my last doctor's visit, my doctor told me that if I do not take my insulin, I will not live to see my 45th birthday. I just wanna say that every night before I go to bed, I pray to God that I will wake up in the morning. Without taking my medicine, I could slip into a diabetic coma and never wake up. Who would take care of my kids? Please vote no on these cuts. Sincerely, Chris Caboose.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
My name is Cheryl, and I received an email through the Healthy Workforce, and I read the letter over and over, and for the life of me, I couldn't figure out why I was getting a reduction in pay when the cost of living continues to increase. The cost of rent has gone up on me, the cost of my electricity has increased, unfortunately. The cost of wood has increased for heating my home. The cost of wood has increased for heating my home, and the price of food has also increased with the skyrocketing price of gasoline. I would personally like to know exactly how many open positions there are now and how much would be saved in annual salaries if those positions were not to be filled. Perhaps we could help our budget in that way. I watched over and over again during the budget crisis, new people being hired on while I continued to take pay cuts, and now my retirement is being threatened. And I face a possible 12.5% reduction in pay. I, for one, can't afford any reduction. I work hard, and I was offered a retirement package that I really liked. I agreed to a certain wage, and I also agreed to a healthcare package when I signed on with Del Norte County. I've since given up, excuse me, I've since given up my free health insurance, which I did like very much. And in return, I am now paying for it myself. I'm also told that there's gonna be an increase in my health insurance rates as well. While I'm standing here today not knowing whether I'm gonna get a 5% cut to have to pay my own PERS, or if I'm gonna get 12.5% cut, I don't know what's gonna happen when I walk out that door today, what my financing is gonna be like, if I'm gonna be able to pay my bills. My husband is disabled and required to take over $300 worth of life-saving medication a month. I can't afford it now, I'm already in debt. I've been saving and hoping and waiting for my 5% to come back. I have a couple of quick comments from other people who couldn't be here, and I promised I would attempt to get this to you for them. First comment is, I was concerned when the county gave us the furloughs last fiscal year, not so much for myself, but for my coworkers. Some of my coworkers cannot afford to go to the doctor, let alone pay for life-saving prescriptions. Some of them stopped taking their medications. While you may think that this is not a big deal, imagine being an insulin-dependent diabetic, or have heart problems, or high blood pressure, and not being able to take your medication. For those coworkers who have chose to be taking care of their family and going to the doctor, of course, their family comes first. Which shall I do? Clothe and feed my family, or go to the doctor so I feel better? Hard choice to make for some of us. These are a great bunch of very hard-working people who not only give themselves at work, but also at home, but at the same time, they need to be able to take care of themselves physically and mentally. You're talking about giving us a 5% decrease in salary, which I have no doubt we will never see again. You also talk about changing our healthcare coverage so that we will pay more. We give CMSP and medical to our clients who get better and cheaper and more coverage than we do. It's sad.
Cheryl, your time is up. Can you save the rest of this for the actual agenda item?
Much appreciated.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we will move on to the timed item. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ellen Holgate, and I also am a county worker, and I'm here this morning to address the Board of Supervisors to just be clear that the things that we're facing-
Can I ask you to hold this?
For another comment time?
The comment, that, the budget item is-
Sure, absolutely, I'd be glad to.
Is coming up right this minute, as soon as I can open the public hearing. Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing to adopt the proposed budget for fiscal year 2011-12 and approve the following recommendations.
Before the board today is the recommended budget as required by government code. To make it very clear, the county has Resolution 2003-78, which allows the Board of Supervisors to extend the period for the final budget, which is an adopted budget, until no later than October 2nd of any year. The, we've had one budget workshop in the past that went over most of the issues, so I won't go over all of those issues, and I won't read this report verbatim. I'll go over these recommendations, and if the board would so choose to ask questions at that point, we have myself, the auditor controller, Neil Lopez, and Joey Young from the personnel end, and they can also help with any questions you might have. As of today, as you know, the state has not passed a budget. We expect to see another budget coming up, possibly for a vote as early as today. It does not include some of the cost-cutting measures that had originally been proposed either by the governor or by the Republican Party in this sense. There will be some backfilling, apparently, in this proposal for VLF and rural sheriff's money at this point. The proposal, it just came in, just before the meeting started, I was reading it. There may also, in that sense, still be some revenue available for homicide reimbursement at this point, too. We'll know that once they vote on it, and if the governor approves the budget. They haven't set a date yet, or a time yet for today as to when they might bring that one forward. Before you today, there are seven recommendations I would like to include in number seven, and you'll have those before you, the non-general fund budget summary sheets. Those are to be included and to be approved as part of the recommended budget today also. We began this process in April with having individual meetings with each department, and we've had multiple meetings since then. It originally started with a requested budget of about $2.4 million. It is now down to about $1.5 million. It will also take, you know, some additional savings, we believe, once the state budget is approved to come down to a balanced budget. Presently before you is some proposals, those will be discussed in here also, for reorganizations, there are some elimination of positions, some vacant and some filled. I'll go through the recommendations for the board action. One would be to discuss and take action as necessary to modify the 2011-2012 fiscal year recommended budgets as presented by departments. Two is eliminate, establish, reclassify, and transfer positions as listed in Attachment A. Three, approve the position list request for wireless device stipends as provided in the adopted wireless device policy, Attachment B. This one is on there today for consideration in the sense of this budget gives spending authority for the county, and if there isn't a decision made on this today, then there wouldn't be spending authority. Four, designate positions listed in Attachment C as seven hours per Article II, Section 2.36A of the Memorandum of Understanding between the County of Del Norte and Del Norte County Employees Association, SEIU Local 1021, effective with the pay period beginning 9/16/2011. This is a, one of the few solutions we have outside of collective bargaining, along with the elimination of positions. It's placed on there today for the board to take action, but delayed until 9/16/2011, primarily because at the time the budget memo was written, we had no idea when the state would come forward with a budget. Obviously, that can be amended. If the state budget is, comes through today and is approved, we would evaluate that and then come back with the recommendations to the board. Five would be direct the budget team to continue to research and analyze all their cost savings options. Obviously, we've been doing that now for several months, and we'll continue. Six, accept the offer of the appointed department heads, the assistant department heads, and confidential employees of a 5% contribution to the general fund, either through the contribution to either the employees' portion of PERS or to the health fund, effective September 16th, 2011. And that date could change also, that could be moved up after we have a couple of more meetings and establish what the state budget has. To also mention that they're having discussions with the elected department heads and the Board of Supervisors, and I believe it's a consensus across the board that a similar contribution will occur at that time. And seven, approve and adopt the 2011-2012 fiscal recommended budgets as modified in spreadsheet Attachment D, and those would also include the non-general fund summary sheets that were presented to you just before the meeting.
Jay, how many pages did you say the summary sheets were?
The non-general fund, I believe there's four sheets that go along with that. And in your memo, the general fund is a front and back sheet.
Right, we have that one, and four.
You have that one.
I thought you said seven, and I didn't have that many pages.
I might've said several. If there are any questions at this time, I'd certainly take those and try to provide answers. Also, like I said, we have the rest of the budget team here that can assist in that.
We're only projecting 1.65% off the Stimson Fund?
Presently.
That's horrible.
We would certainly like it to be a lot larger, yes.
Are you recommending all of these items?
Well, the way I'm looking at it, it's proposed. I'm hoping that we don't have to settle on what's in here. I'm hoping we find some other avenues, and unfortunately, we're tied by the state. We're just tied. We don't know where we're at, we don't know where we're going to be. So, it's real hard to put something out there that is gonna make everybody happy when we don't know what that's gonna be to solve, help solve some of these problems.
But to clarify, as of today, we do know where we're at, at that point. But yes, the unknowns with the state budget will certainly affect what we have here, and we will react appropriately when that comes forward.
Yeah, I know where we're at as far as $1.5 million out. I'm hoping something is going to help close that gap along.
We hope also.
And I appreciate all the hard work. I know the hours that these guys have been putting in. They're putting in 12, 14, 15-hour days, trying to come up with something that is going to be fair, try to keep people employed, try to not take any more than we have to. We can't work miracles, and there have been comments made about, well, just increase your revenues. In this economy, I want everybody to understand. The county revenues are affected greatly by the economy. When you look at the assessor's office, everything we have is paid for by our taxes. Look at the price of homes. Some of you have lost your homes because you couldn't afford them anymore. They are worth anywhere from a third to half less than what they were four or five years ago. People are walking away from their homes because of that. Homes are being reassessed. That drops the tax rolls. When you take what used to be a $325,000 home, and now it's valued at $225,000, $230,000, there goes money off the tax rolls. We aren't seeing any increases, we aren't seeing a bunch of new building. That's where your revenues increase. We can't go out and ask all the contractors, "We'll start building a bunch of spec homes and hope that everything will come back and we can increase our revenues." CDD Department, those people in there, we have to have a revenue to keep them there for the services. With no building permits, no plan checks, on and on, there is no revenue coming into that department. I just, I can't go on enough, and I'm not here to negotiate anything. I just think there are things that some people are not understanding. And if you think it's easy for us to sit up here, it isn't. I worry every minute of the day what's gonna happen to some employees. I've been there, I was an employee before. I moved into this position, and frankly, I wish I was back in that position. Okay, Supervisor McClure, do you have anything to add?
I, I wanna hear a public comment, but I know that the reality is, is that as a county, we're in a rock and a hard spot, and, and it is not comfortable. And for us to try to figure it out, I'm not sure exactly where to go. I do wanna make one comment on the PERS contribution, that I, as a supervisor, and the other supervisors are in agreement that we would make that 5% PERS contribution also. And the reason that that's a significant contribution as opposed to a furlough days is that it comes off your, it comes off your check pre-taxed, so it's not, it's not post-tax, so that's better as far as that 5% is concerned. And it's something that will come back to you in retirement. So, that's better than furlough days, I think, personally. And I'm not sure that information is out there because I, it's my understanding that our plan is not to have 5% furlough days and 5% PERS contribution from the employee. It's trying to figure out how to get to that, to that place. And, you know, I'm sorry that I have to, but we have the Sheriff's Association. When you're a peace officer in California, your PERS contribution is about 33%, which is huge, which is not being paid for by the employee, but is being paid for by the government, by the general fund. And rumor mill has it that there's a proposal out there that would say, "Well, take our general fund employees and don't give them, don't give them a raise, but just have the non-general fund people." And I have a really hard time with that because historically, we as a county have attempted to try to keep the playing field level, that if you're an accounts one person at the Flynn Center, you're gonna be paid the same as if you were an accounts one person in a non-general fund department, in order to be able to possibly transfer later on, in order, in order to have a kind of a symbolic fairness amongst all the membership. So, I have a hard time with that. And I have a harder time with the understanding that when negotiations happen for contract negotiations for employees, it is rule that those negotiations are, that information stays at that negotiations table, and that's where it's supposed to be. And I was appalled to find a public statement in the paper that seemed to void that traditional agreement within organizing and negotiations published in our local triplicate. I was, I was blown away. Because I can't say what we get, what my team has put forward, and I would like to be able to do that. But the rules of negotiation are not that. So, I just wanna put that the PERS thing, to me, makes an enormous amount of cents because it's pre-tax dollars, and we could probably get someone to figure out what, how it translates dollar-wise. Because that 5% deduct on your check for furlough days is greater than the 5% that you're gonna see when it comes pre-tax. And then as far as health insurance, I know. You know, I started out with the school district with a 100% covered health insurance that I'm now paying, I think, about $1,500 a year for. It used to be entirely driven by the employer, it's now driven. I also participate in a PERS contribution, I think, I think we're at 6%, we may be at 9%. But we, you know, as far as district employees, that's part of it. So, I think everybody in the nation is feeling, is feeling the pinch, and that we have to figure a way through it. With having the blindness that we have in relationship to the state government makes it even more difficult. But at the same time, I think that not to lose sight of the prize, and the prize is keeping the county functioning and together. And this is the worst budget year I've seen since I've been on the Board of Supervisors, for what that's worth. Doesn't mean that I can't figure out a way to deal with it. And to me, the worst outcome is that seven-hour day, so.
Thank you.
A lot of things run through your mind, and I'm gonna be even more delicate than Supervisor McClure was because I do not want it to appear that I'm negotiating from up here because that's against the rules. I was a union negotiator for a dozen years, lumber and sawmill workers' unions from Portland down past Eureka. One thing that we abided by was we kept our eye on the prize, what was good for the people we represented, we maintained good communication, and we never put out mis- We maintained good communication, and we never put out misinformation. And I hope that your union representatives do, can adhere to the same. The county is sort of a microcosm of what's going on in Sacramento. You know, there could have been, we don't see the budget in front of us yet, but by all appearances, it's not going to happen. There could have been a budget that was put forward that had budget reform, which probably would have been greater impact than what some of the local proposals have been. And something that would have addressed services and needs of the constituency, of the residents of the state and the residents of the counties. But because of the lack of cooperation, because people put themselves first rather than their neighbor or the person next to them in line at the grocery store or their coworker, it's not going to happen. Petty personal politics is what got involved with a bunch of misinformation. What people are saying to the people in Sacramento, and, and you have to lump, we have to lump ourselves in that same thing as we are government employees, is they want the government employees cut first. They don't want their taxes raised. They would rather suffer in services, except for a few that they outline and that they would encourage us to identify what's important to our community. But, so you've got to be thinking about that. The people here in this county are not going to vote to increase taxes to create more government jobs when we've been told time and time again that people want less government jobs, starting at the state. Having said that, it is extremely frustrating, under framing that discussion, to know that, well, number one, there are no furloughs currently on the books for the county. That was last year. Those aren't planned for this year. Okay? But there are proposals out there that if there was better communication perhaps, but maybe if we looked in the mirror at each other and saw the real impact to ourselves, to the services that we would give to the people that vote for us and that we represent, that it would include no layoffs. It would include no furloughs. It would include full services to the people that we represent. It would allow for our coworkers to keep their jobs and with little impact. Or the least amount of impact and something that we could recover further into the future. So I'm going to stop there so it doesn't appear as if I'm negotiating. But it hurts to see that when you come from a position of treating family like family, to come with, with a holistic solution, that in this day and age, the way the structure of some of the negotiations take place, that's not allowed to happen. You have to posture and put forth an unpalatable solution to try to get to something to where you wanted to go in the first place. And I think if there is a fault of anything, it's probably that we tried to communicate that we wanted to treat everybody as equals and have that discussion rather than the posturing. This is the first time I've ever seen this. Before I was elected and since I've been elected, it's 19, what, 96? I think I ran the first time in 92. This doesn't happen. Look in the mirror and let's come to a solution that includes no layoffs, no furloughs. Okay? And something that where you don't lose your pay through, for infinity. Now I'm willing to listen to what, to look at the placards and listen to what you have to say.
Is there any other comment from board members?
Yeah, I would just, I'd just like to, you know, I agree with Supervisor Finnegan and Supervisor McClure. And the last thing that we want to do, and I think the last thing that the negotiating team wants to do, their, their county employees also, the last thing that they want to see are layoffs. And certainly, we don't want to go to seven-hour workdays. We realize that we're already down to bare bones as it is. So if we have to lay off more people, that just puts more work on somebody else. It's not palatable. It is what it is. There is so much money to go around. And, you know, we're burdened with the task of balancing the budget. And it, it all comes down to, you know, when it comes down to people, that hits us the hardest. We've got great employees. We want to keep them all. That's all I have to say.
I would concur with the rest of the board. I mean, I think the real world's hit Delano County at this, at this point, and we get hit the hardest because we do not have the land base to generate the tax revenue. You go to other counties, they're, they're taking out a reserve. They don't have a reserve. What's that?
Your mic on?
Yeah. Yeah, it's off. Anyway, we, we don't have the reserve to be like a Marin County-type situation. And, and it's unfortunate, and we've been put, I think, in this situation a long time ago, is we just don't have enough land base to actually generate revenue to, to make sure everyone stays whole at this point. You know, I'm sure the rest of the board would concur is if we were in a reverse situation where there was an influx revenue, I, I'm sure a cost living raise would be one of the first things we could do. I don't think anybody on this board would be opposed to that. But the reality is, there's a, there's less amount of money now. And that's where we have to make the decisions that, that are coming up. I, I think you're looking at, you know, potentially worst-case scenario with the seven-hour workdays. I think there is a way to get to the point where there aren't any layoffs or, or furlough days or, or seven-hour workdays. But it's going to have to be, the leadership on both sides is going to have to be honest at the table and, 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 you know, with the idea we want to keep everyone whole in the process. I, I think it's ridiculous at this point for even to think about raises right now. That's crazy. With what? It's out of thin air. I mean, you, you can't do it. There is less money there. You know, obviously, we'd want a different, more of a perfect world to, to be able to do that. But we're just not in that situation right now. So that, that's all I have to say on that.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing for public comment. Karen? If, she's coming up to speak, Richard. If we have a lot of you that are going to speak, it would be nice to have you sign up with Jeremy. Do you have a piece of paper over there, Jeremy? Our clerk of the board. Yes.
Yes, while she's speaking.
Okay, good morning. I've been here before, and I was hoping never to have to appear for this reason again. There could be a lot of finger pointing that goes on this morning. I read David's letter and thought it was great. It was in response to a letter that was sent to all county employees that we felt should not have been sent because it was the middle of negotiations. The union does not want to see a seven-hour work week, whether they're general fund employees, whether they're union members, whether they're state or federally funded. This is a small county. We all know one another. I'm not looking for anybody to lose their job because God, I don't know what I'd do if I lost mine. I have no desire for a coworker to become one of my clients. Most of you, Leslie, I know, grew up here. Mr. Sullivan, Martha. David, I don't know if you did. And there was a time when we-
Seventy-two.
When we did have money, lots of money. We had lots of trees. We had lots of boats. We don't have any of it anymore. But it just feels like, we didn't sign the budget to goddess in this mess. I was supposed to get my step increase this year. I signed the paperwork, but because of the furlough day, I didn't get that. What's been relayed to me by my coworkers is they would really like to see the elected officials, we go through this every time. They're refusing to take a 5% pay cut. But it's okay for the employees in their office? That's, that's not equitable. And that's what we want, is if we're going to take a pay cut, the elected officials should too. They shouldn't sit up there, and some of them have been county employees. And it's not okay for them to say, I'm not going to take a pay cut, but my employees are. We need everybody to do this or nobody. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Can I just, Karen, address that without negotiating here? Is I think it was stated early on that all the electeds have agreed that they will take a 5% PERS cut.
Yes.
Or contribution.
I'm sure they get-
I think was probably what you're referring to, which is a pay cut.
Thank you.
Richard?
What I'm going to say again, may not go overbelt with some of your audience. Because I read the article in Saturday's newspaper. What amazes me is something I witnessed last week. I saw five chairs being loaded up from the carpenter shop. These chairs were not bought locally through an ordinance that was passed by the county and the city about local purchasing. Every year, a single department head goes out and buys new chairs for the social service department. Well, that money that the county spent on those chairs wasn't circulated in Delano County. Now, the union should be questioning actions like that. The services that I used to be provided by one agency in this county, those services have been cut. I used to be able, you know, people talk about their prescriptions. I used to be able to go to the county mental health department and be given a prescription that was commonly given them by drug reps. That's no longer happening. The problem is that the people that many of these employees service are taking deep cuts too. I would hope they would realize that and question some of the actions of their department heads. Also, they, there was a lot of talk about healthcare. Well, I'm aware, family first five has insurance policy for young people, for their children. If they need that services, maybe they should go there. Also, hey, I got to use the local food banks too. So if I see you over at the veterans hall on the Wednesday of the month, I'll say hi to you because that's a reality nowadays. So please, I'm asking my county employees to work with the Board of Supervisors and come to a reasonable agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Connie Morrison?
Yes. Well, I do my own finances. I, and my personal financial planning. I didn't do anything that was excessive. I tried to save my money. I didn't get involved in anything that would end up costing me money later on. I tried to manage the risks. I tried to catastrophize if it's a worst-case scenario. But I see the county and the city both going on these ventures. And Mr. Miles said something at one of the meetings last week, and he said, it seems like we put the cart before the horse. You keep getting grant money and no jobs come from this. And the money just goes poof, up in the air. And then I noticed that you were buying another building. And I didn't know what you were buying the building for. And I get scared. And I'm thinking, my God, my taxes are going to go up. I'm on a limited fixed income because I'm getting older now. I'm a senior. And, um-
We're not buying a building.
Yes, you recused yourself. It was from a church. You bought a building from a church. You didn't take it, you didn't take a-
We put a playground down in Burke Street.
Okay. I didn't know what it was for. I just saw it in the newspaper. You get a little clip in the newspaper like that. No explanation. I'm going, what is this for? I'm just telling you that I don't want to end up having my house foreclosed upon because I can't afford the city malls what to do with the sludge. Now, these pipes are going to go, and then 500 more people with more sludge to take off. That's going to increase my, my finances. I bought a piece of property that I have, one house on two acres. You guys keep changing the codes, the zoning on it. So I'm going to end up having to use their outrageous $42 million fecal filter and, and then take the, truck the stuff somewhere. I don't know. But as elected officials, I would really appreciate it if you watched my money as if it were yours.
Thank you, Connie. Next person on the-
Helen Fugate?
Actually, it's Helen Holgate. I like the toothpaste, only with an H. That's perfectly okay. Thank you. In addressing the Board of Supervisors, I appreciate everybody who's here in the room. I am a county employee and have been for several years. And my desire in this whole thing is to see, hopefully as everyone is, that things equitably are changed in whatever way they need to, to address the budget issues. My concern, though, is also that some of the budgetary things that we're looking at have other possible solutions. So that's what I would like for us to look at. I know that the CAO has presented some things to the board. And yes, there are negotiations that can happen with the union. And I don't know, some comments have been made about leakage of information. It's unfortunate that things like that happen, but we're human beings and things like that happen. It is unfortunate because hopefully, if everybody's on the same page about doing what's right for this community, and I moved here because I chose to move here. I came from Oklahoma. It's a long way to put a U-Haul together and truck all your stuff here and pay taxes, which I do every year. So my concern would be that as a county worker, I'm looking at the potential. Potential, I said, is not a done deal. I totally understand. That's why we're here today. That there could be a 12.5% cut. I experienced the layoffs. I was there for the furloughs. It affected my paycheck. I can guarantee it did. And I pay like everybody else does, my food, my water bill, all those things. I live, you know, here. So my concern again is that the board hopefully will look at some alternative ways of coming up with things that will not cause a huge impact in the way that you've heard. I listen to my fellow employees talking about not taking medication that is life-threatening to who they are. I understand we all have our personal stuff. I imagine every one of you as Board of Supervisors has that. So I'm just saying, we need to look. We do need every county employee. I work for social services. I work in child welfare. I can guarantee, I probably will have job security for the rest of my life in one sense of the word because there are always clients to serve in that population. I want job security or I'm getting paid to do that. So my concern again is that we look at some things that are pulling general fund dollars that maybe could be changed so that we would have better pool of money to use so that we don't have to look at 12.5% cuts. I totally understand the 5% and that the Board of Supervisors, because of PERS, would incur that also. That's happening now. We can't live in the past. It would have been nice, though, if we'd said, oh, maybe we needed to do cuts across the board for everybody sooner. And again, I'm saying across the board. I don't want anybody in this room, whoever they are, to be any more affected than we have to with the economy that we all deal with. I totally understand that. Again, I'm just asking that we negotiate for things that can be more helpful. Now, I don't know totally about all the ways that revenue comes, comes into this county. I can tell you that I worked with the Tall Ships Festival. I think there are possibly things that maybe our community could become involved with to bring more tourism dollars or other revenue in, where other people are going to bring tax dollars into our city, which would be great. I actually volunteered my time to do the public relations work when that event went on and took my own time and my own money to drive over to Medford and tell people to come over to the Tall Ships Festival. I went to the Chamber of Commerce over there in Ashland and spoke to them and said, we've got a great thing going on. So I just think there are alternative ways of looking at things. And I respect everybody that's here. I appreciate the hard work that everybody in this room does. I want us not to have a sinking ship. I want us to look at the ways- I want us to look at the ways that we can responsibly take care of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more on the list to speak?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. I'm appearing before today as president of the Employees Union, and so I too have to be careful about how I phrase things because I cannot negotiate directly with you either. I will say the one thing that really gives me hope is on page one of the budget package, item number five, where staff is asking you to direct them to continue to research and analyze all other cost-saving options. That's good news because that's what we want to do too. There's one thing that you really need to know is that the 12.5% would be catastrophic. We would be burying people if we imposed that. We'd be losing services. Morale would go into the toilet. The whole, the wheels would come off the wagon. And the union has a commitment to not go there. We're just not going to go there. We do have a commitment to work with the county budgeting team, negotiating team, to work out a workable solution. And that's what we're going to continue to do. But that seven-hour workday, there's some debate as to whether or not it could be lawfully imposed. I don't know. I'm not an attorney. All I know is that it's not a workable solution. That being said, there's one more thing I need to address. The hardest thing I've ever had to do in my life is admit when I'm wrong. And regarding some misinformation that went out, it was a mistake of fact, not an intentional misstatement of information. And my fact-checking wasn't up to par, and I apologize for anybody that was offended by it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, David.
Hello. My name is Georgia England, and I am a mother. I am a sister. I'm a neighbor. I'm also an employee of the Department of Health and Human Services as a Social Worker III. And I am a union member. Absolutely petrified to be standing in front of you. I've never gotten involved in politics, but I think at this point in time where I'm seeing a lot of my coworkers and my clientele absolutely worried about what's happening and what could happen, I feel like I have a responsibility to myself and to my coworkers who are more scared than I am to come up here and say something. In regards to the potential 12.5% reduction, Ms. McClure, you're right, you can't make miracles. But I think that the board has the opportunity and the ability to do some restructuring of how the departments are run. If a person can't afford to have a housekeeper, what do you do? Do you lessen the amount that you're putting on your food bill expense so you can pay for your housekeeper? It doesn't make sense. The old days, rob Peter to pay Paul. Continue doing that, you're going to continue to be in the red. I mean, it just makes sense. If I can't afford cable, I'm going to let it go. Worst-case scenario, I might have to go borrow a video or rent a video. I mean, it's from the lower level all the way up. Restructuring is something that just makes sense. Sometimes you have to make, you have to cut losses. And, you know, my understanding is, for an example, the Borrow Boys Ranch, if, that's losing money into the general fund dollars. I hate to say that anybody's job could be put on the line, but if something is wasting money, let it go. It's, it makes sense. If I can't afford to drive my second car, which I can't, I can't afford to fix the transmission. It's sitting. I'm driving the only vehicle I have. My other child, my high, or college student, drives it for her work. When I can't have my car, I walk to work. And that's real. That's what's happening right now. I paid a daycare bill and I couldn't afford to put food on my table that last week before my paycheck. And I'm living paycheck to paycheck. I found myself going to the daycare where I have my child go and asking the pastor for a food box. That's humiliation. It's embarrassing. I had to do what I had to do as a mom, though. There are several workers that strongly disagree with the tiered peers contribution. I'm not going to say anymore on that. I'm just representing some of my coworkers. I do believe that if there's a 12.5% reduction, though, it is going to impact the community. It's already impacting the morale in the agency, in the unit that I work in. The level of stress has gone up. If there's a reduction in the hours that we work, the two things that the state looks at is quality, quantity, and I know department heads are looking at production. Those things are all going to go down. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lath has asked to speak again. Is that okay?
He hasn't spoken during this public hearing.
All right. Lath, go.
Public comment that he has spoken at.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairperson. I just want to address a couple of things that were stated by members of the board in the context of this hearing. Our members have taken furloughs and sacrificed for the county seven years out of the last 10. It's true, I guess, that you haven't given yourselves pay increases. But if your members of your units are taking 5% pay cuts, it amounts to the same thing. You said that you want to avoid layoffs, but this proposal includes layoffs that are taking effect very soon in probation and barrow. I understand that you're balancing the budget and that it's difficult. But I want to draw attention to those people because they're real people who've worked hard for many years. And I want to say that we didn't go to the newspaper until after the CAO told us that he intended to recommend cuts of 12.5% to all county workers that we represent, which would amount to an enormous financial hardship. Many people would lose their homes. And cutting services by 12.5% would have a dramatic impact on the people in this community. And I believe that the members of the community have a right to know about proposals like that. Thank you.
No one else on the list? Is there any other public comment?
First, I'd like to speak as a representative for the elected officials, not those that are sitting in front of me, but those on the side. And yes, we have agreed to take a 5% cut. I'd be more than willing to take more than that if it was necessary to keep the bodies that I need for public safety and patrol. The reality is this simply, we've reached that wall, that financial wall that you all are aware, are open to know. And that is that we can continue to make cuts, but then we cannot provide the necessary service to our community. The whole existence for government to exist, to be here, is to provide that public service. When we cannot afford to pay what we pay in benefits and salaries and continue to provide the level of service that is not only needed but necessary to our public, then something has to give. We have reached that point, I know in my office, where I cannot cut any more bodies. We've cut except seven prior to this request. We'll be cutting another six in order to meet our budget deadline. To do that, we put people at risk, we put officers at risk, we put the community at risk. We cannot do that and cut bodies in order to put public safety at risk in our community. What has to give is somewhere along the line. We have to make a decision. How many bodies do we need to perform the functions necessary to provide service to our community at the level needed in this community? And then figure out how we can afford to pay for that service. But something on one end or the other has to give. Monies are not coming in. Revenues aren't coming in. Our state is on the decline. Every time we raise any kind of taxes, on this side, we drive all of our sales tax over to the border. Those businesses that require and thrive on tourist dollars are 14% down this year. So we know that's going to continue in a trend. So again, we know what we must do. They are not things that we want to do. They're not things that we like to do. But our whole existence as government is to provide service to our community, and we must determine what level that means to be at and then fund to that level. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Wilson. Are there any other public comment?
Sorry, I didn't sign up. My name is Donna Wheeler. I'm a newly widowed mother of two young boys. And I had to reconstruct my budget when my husband passed away a year and a half ago. And it was really hard, but I tried to manage it. And then with, then I heard that I had to reconstruct it with the 5% cut. I was previously on financial aid many, many years ago, and I worked my way up. And I tried, and I worked hard, and I got out of it. And every day, I still wonder how I'm going to put food on my children's table. I want to provide for them and give them everything that they need, things that I didn't have when I was growing up. And to not know where we're going to be out, I understand you guys don't know either right now, and you're trying to work in our best interest, but it scares all of us. We don't know, and we have to provide for our families just as you guys do also. And looking at being a lower-paid employee, we need to know, as everyone has continued to say, it does need to start at the top. Look at everything. And my little pay isn't helping if the higher people aren't helping. It does need to go across the board so that I don't feel it as much, so that my children can eat, so they can have clothes, so they can eat at school. I don't get reduced lunches. I don't get free lunches for my children. I have to pay. And if I can't do that, they don't eat. They have to beg at the school district. You have to ask for food at a shared table if somebody else doesn't want your food, their food. And I don't think that's right either. There's many cuts at the school district. It's all over. We understand that. But please remember us, that we need to feed our children, and we need to be able to construct our budget so that we can make cuts necessary, as we know that you're going to be making cuts for places where we don't need things. If we don't need new chairs every year, if we don't need items like cable, we don't need things, get rid of it so that we can have our pay and we can feed our children. That's what's most important, is food on the table, getting to work. I don't want to go back on financial aid and be completely dependent on the government again. I want to help the government, and I want to help other people. And I can't do that if I can't provide for my family. Thank you.
I'm starting a garden right now, and I have two acres. And I hear, I hear and I feel what these people are saying. And between canning and gardening, I don't know how we would do it, but there's plenty. I think there's plenty, but we need to learn how to share or know how to do that.
Thank you. I think we do have a couple, community gardens or another new one just starting next to the Pregnancy Care Center. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, can I make one statement in regards to, one of the statements that was made in regards to the loss of healthcare? That's not on the table and never has been. So if people are worried about that, I would hope that they don't because that hasn't been on there. There's increased costs in healthcare that the county has to absorb, but we haven't proposed that at any time.
Okay. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing.
I, you know, just got a quick comment on some of the things I heard. I like, I like the attitude of community and working together to find solutions. I embrace the fact that the union finds it unpalatable to have a 12.5% cut, as do we. I think you've heard from the electeds and you also heard from the supervisors that we embrace a solution that would incur 5% contribution to PERS, of the employees' contribution. I guess is what I'm saying is that if that's the attitude of the leadership of the union, of what we heard today, then I am sure that you heard what we heard and you're going to come to a solution in the short term, and the communication will get better between us and amongst yourselves. So I find some hope. I think what people don't understand is we only have so many tools, and I know the union leadership understands this, only so many tools in the negotiating arsenal. We do not get to propose a 3%, 5%, 7%, or 9% cut. Don't get to do that. That's only by agreement. The only tool, and Jay, you can correct me here, that through the contracts and MOUs is a 12.5% that's spelled out. And that's where you have to go, when I talked earlier about posturing and negotiation. So if we get past that posturing, since we all agree we don't want to go there, I look forward to some good results from your negotiating team. Having said that, it's our obligation as supervisors to pass a proposed budget today, fully understanding that there's a commitment on both sides to work to improve it.
Any other comment from board members?
Yes, I think that that's what David is saying about that we have, we're required by law to have a proposed budget. And that proposed budget many times makes people suck air because it's like, "Oh, my God." That's because it's one of the worst-case scenarios. I'm really concerned that today in Sacramento, they're looking at the budget, that budget has a mid-year trigger. And I'm not sure how that's going to be addressed because that mid-year trigger is affecting our social services impact was huge on that, on that trigger. So I don't know what that's going to mean, other than my goal is to try to keep everybody employed and in the, in the most effective way possible. Because I think that, I mean, we know we're going to, we know we have budget cuts ahead of us, and we know that we are going to lose some, some positions. Many of those positions are the vacant positions. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to look at, at the attachment A. But, so the goal is to try to rearrange the, you know, we're rearranging deck chairs right now on the, on the Titanic in relationship to not knowing where our funding is coming from, but trying to attach those to vacant positions. We are going to lose some positions, and it's not a good, a good feeling, but it is, we have to figure a way for sustainability. And that's pretty much where we are right now in relationship to how to go for the future. And to me, the employee contribution to PERS allows that sustainability to start to, to come to fruition. And it's tough, but it is sustainable. And that's what we have to, that's, that's the, that's the prize that we have to look for.
Questions? My question is, you cannot come up with those. Suggestions have been presented to the board and make a decision on it. So you can't say, "Oh, we don't like, here's something alternative to the 12.5% that you have presented." I mean, if, if that's presented. But right now, the 12.5% is what's...
That's our only, that's our only trigger in relationship to a balanced budget.
I understand, but the board can then say, "That's not good."
Do you mind? I'll respond.
Just so we don't get into it.
I'll respond to the chair. That we have to adopt a budget, but this is a proposed budget, and budgets are always liquid.
My, my only comment is, when I saw the newspaper this morning, I told my husband, I said, "I hope everyone really pays attention to the word 'proposed.'" This is worst-case scenario, the 12.5%. Hopefully, that would be worst-case scenario. And, and I, I don't think it's going to come to that personally. I am hoping not, but we, we have to adopt a proposed budget, and this is what's been presented to us.
Proposed has to be improved three times. It will change, it can change.
It can change.
This is our country, it's our country. It's not a government that's talking.
Okay. Any other comment? No. I'm sorry, we, we get a, conversations going all over. I'm sorry, we, we get a, conversations going all over the place here, and the public hearing has been closed, and now I am looking for a motion. And somebody-
Well, I'll make the motion. It's got to be done, and then we'll kick it back to the negotiators, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I would move that we adopt the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2011 and '12 as presented, with the following recommendations, itemized in 1 through 7 on the attached agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, since there's a whole bunch of people here? When are the next negotiation scheduled? Good. Sooner the better.
Go ahead. Pardon me? Sure, we're going to take about a five-minute break.
Back on May 24th, I was here with the 2010 census numbers, and the recommendation was brought to you that, in regards to local redistricting, that the supervisory districts remain the same with the lines being not drawn. At that time, you wanted maps. There are maps done and are ready to go. I've been told those maps will be made available on the website within the next week. So, at this time, I'm just asking that the supervisory districts all remain the same. They were all within the number count, a percentage, and the maps that you received were adequate in what you asked for.
Thank you. All right, I said sorry. I'm going to change your name.
My mom did.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Any comments? Most of them?
Now, I always said it before, you know, you hate to move a line. It might be those five people that liked you.
That's right.
But- Exactly. I would move to waive the full reading and read by title only. Introduce the ordinance amending chapter 2.04, sections 2.04 dash, or dot, 021 through 2014-025, the Delmar County Code establishing supervisory districts as requested by the county clerk recorder.
It's 20.04, right?
Sure.
You said 2014.
Well, you know, 2014. What would I do without the spell check?
I have a motion and a second. Would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Just for that, Mike, you get those five.
We're going to move on to item number five. That was a timed item also. I apologize for running a little late. Community Health Indicators for Delmar, presented by Jessica Van Arsdale, M.D., M.P.H., Director of Health Research, California Center for Rural Policy.
Yes. Hi, it's me again. I'm here to actually introduce Dr. Van Arsdale.
She's behind.
Oh, there she is.
There you go.
Hi. What happened to her? This is really a follow-up from our last board, from your last board meeting, when we, we had Laura Olson here from the California Endowment, and she talked about the, the million-dollar investment, million-dollar plus that the endowment is making at least per year, planning for the next 10 years and perhaps even more. And so part of us, as well as the endowment itself, but folks in the community, I'm one of the folks that volunteered to be on the evaluation committee, is one of the things we certainly want to know, is, is this investment from the endowment having an impact, and a favorable impact on our community and its well-being? So, we want to be able to be successful. We want to be able to monitor our success and provide feedback to the work that's going on in the community, which Laura outlined. So, in, in that regard, the endowment has contracted with Humboldt State University, the California Center for Rural Policy, to help facilitate and keep an eye on our evaluation work. And you've, you've seen it before in a number of arenas, that Humboldt State has really been a breath of fresh air for us, and being able to really understand our local data. Because we have such small numbers, in some cases, it becomes more complicated to draw conclusions. And some data just hasn't even existed until Humboldt State started their work. So it's been very helpful for our department and for the community, and now we're going to be using it specifically for the endowment work. So, we really appreciate the fact that Humboldt State has created that center. So, I'm going to hand out at the end, a Health Indicators report that the work today will be part, is actually part of, so you'll have a copy of that. It's also on their website. It's specifically for Delmar County. And that's something that has really been a wonderful addition. So, thank you, Jessica. And all yours.
Let's see, let me see if I can get this a little bit closer.
Can I ask a question? What's the M.P.H. stand for? I know you're not a doctor of miles per hour.
Masters in Public Health.
Oh, cool.
So, good morning, everyone. I'm happy to have this opportunity to share with you some of the work I've been doing around community health indicators. And like Gary said, this is just going to be a snapshot of a few of the community health indicators, and in the report, there's a whole host of others. And I'll start the presentation today with looking at some of the areas where Delmar County is not doing so well, and then, and the presentation with areas where Delmar County is doing well. And so just for those of you who aren't familiar with the California Center for Rural Policy, we're a research and policy center at HSU. We were formed in 2005, actually out of efforts from the community, when they recognized that there was a real need for good data on rural areas that could help inform policy that affected rural areas. So, we've done several large projects over the years. One was in 2006. We did the Rural Health Information Survey, which was the largest, most comprehensive survey in Northern California, and that gave us a lot of very rich information about the communities. And then last year, we did a project called Rural Community Vital Signs, which involved the four counties of Delmar, Humboldt, Trinity, and Mendocino. And we facilitated a process with stakeholders to come up with different community indicators to monitor over time. And then more recently, as Gary mentioned, we're working with the Building Healthy Communities Initiative with the California Endowment, and we're assisting with evaluation, data collection and analysis, and policy recommendations. And as Gary said, we're currently working with an evaluation committee that Gary's part of, and several other community members, to come up with a comprehensive plan for monitoring the Building Healthy Communities Initiative over 10 years. And we're sort of taking the indicators that we developed in the Vital Signs Project and narrowing it down to a core set of indicators that we want to monitor in Delmar County. So, as you're all well aware, Delmar County certainly has its challenges in terms of high poverty, high unemployment, and lower levels of educational attainment. And all of these can be significant barriers to health. And so I'm going to go through some of these poverty levels. This is looking at the most recent data that we have from the 2007, 2009 American Community Survey. So you can see here that for the total population, about 1 in 5 in Delmar County is living in poverty. And then it's quite a bit more of about 1 in 3 children in Delmar County are living in poverty. And then this is some information from the survey we did in 2006, which basically just shows kind of the impact of living in low income. So the red, which is those who are living below 200% of the federal poverty level. So they were significantly more likely to not be able to get needed health care. About 30% had no health insurance. Only 30% had any type of professional dental care, which we know is connected to a lot of other health outcomes. And 35% reported transportation as a problem in meeting their health needs. And then, less than 50% had internet access in the home. And low-income respondents were also significantly more likely to smoke cigarettes. And then this is some information that Gary just shared with me on public program participation in Delmar County in 2010, and comparing it to California. So, you know, much higher percent of the population being on CalFresh or food stamps, and participating in CalWorks, and being on Medi-Cal. And this is actually an area where the county's done really well in enrolling people into those programs that they are eligible for. This is looking at households that have experienced hunger due to not being able to afford enough food. And this was from the survey we did in 2006. What's really concerning here is the households with children, where 15.2% of them had experienced hunger in the prior year due to not being able to afford enough food. And we know that from research, hunger in children is associated with significant health problems later on. This is looking at percent of students who are eligible for a free and reduced-price lunch, but for various reasons are not participating in the program. So consistently, about 40% of those who are eligible are not participating in the program, which is higher than in California as a whole. And we don't have a real good understanding of why this is, but we do have some new data from a survey called the Youth Truth Survey, which gets student perceptions, and a fairly high percent of them said they weren't happy with the taste of the food in the schools. And I know there's community efforts right now, working on improving the school meals. This is an interesting one, just looking at the environment that people are living in. So this is types of housing units, and so a very high percent of the population in Delmar County is living in mobile homes compared to California as a whole. And this is probably a reflection of the lower income. And I'm not sure the significance of this in terms of health, aside from the fact that they potentially might be exposed to more things like mold due to the poor insulation in the mobile homes. This is looking at percent of young children who are not in an early education program, such as preschool, nursery school, or Head Start, for at least 10 hours a week. So fairly close to California, where a high percent are not participating in these early education programs. education programs. And this is important, because we know from research that early education programs are associated both with improving social skills, also with educational achievement, but also with some other health outcomes, such as less obesity, and less mental health problems, and less crime later in life, if they did participate in these early programs. This is looking at percent of 3rd grade students who are proficient or advanced in English, and you can see in Delnort County that it's been consistently less than California as a whole, but it has improved some over the years. And this is important, because we know that research has shown a direct correlation between 3rd grade reading level and graduating from high school. Excuse me. So, those who are not proficient by 3rd grade are four times less likely to graduate from high school than those who are proficient. And this is some new data that we have, looking at percent of students who have chronic or severe chronic absence from school. Chronic absence is those who are missing 10 to 19% of the school year, and severe chronic are those who are missing 20% or more. And you can see here that kindergarten, 1st grade, 6th grade, and 12th grade have quite a high percentage of kids who are missing chronically or severely chronic. And this is important, because it predicts school achievement, even in grade 12, or kindergarten, it predicts test scores up through 5th grade. And 9th grade attendance actually is a better predictor of graduating from high school than test scores are. So, this is looking at percent of high school graduates who have all of the courses required to go to the UC or CSU system. And you can see here that in Delnort County, it's been significantly lower than California as a whole, and in 2008, '09, only 9% of the students had the requirements to enter the UC or CSU system. And then, this is looking at the same thing by race and ethnicity, where we see some clear disparities with the Native American students being the least likely to have those required courses, followed by the Hispanic, and then the white and Asian being the most likely, although overall, it's still very low. And Delnort High School dropout is pretty consistent with the rate for California, which is about 20%. And then, this is looking at it by race, ethnicity, where we see the same types of disparities with American Indian and Hispanic populations being more likely to drop out than the white and Asian population. Now, we're shifting to some of the more health-related outcomes. This is looking at births to adolescent mothers, where Delnort County has consistently had a higher teen birth rate than California. It has decreased slightly over time. This is looking at percent of women with late or no prenatal care, so it's those who've entered care after the first trimester or have not received prenatal care. And it was slightly higher than California as a whole, and then it actually jumped up to about 43% in 2007 through 2009. So, I'm not sure what happened there, so this'll be an important thing to monitor over time, and see if that was just a random occurrence, or if that's some sort of trend. This is looking at obesity among low-income children under the age of 5. And again, we're seeing some similar disparities by race and ethnicity, with the American Indian children being more likely to be obese, followed by the Hispanic and white. And then, this is looking at child maltreatment allegations, substantiations, and entry into foster care, where we see similar disparities with the Native American children having the highest amount of allegations, substantiations, and entry into care. Okay, so it's not all bad, though. There are some areas where Delnort County is doing really well, sometimes better than the state of California. So, percent of live births that have a low birth weight, Delnort County's doing really well in that area, better than California as a whole. And with women who are exclusively breastfeeding and hospital discharge, Delnort County is doing better than California. Also, with adolescents who are getting routine checkups, which is a great opportunity for education and prevention. Delnort County is doing really well with childhood vaccinations, and percent of parents who are reading to their young children. And then, students who are scoring high on school protective factors, such as meaningful participation, high expectations, and caring relationships. And then, as I said earlier, percent of people who are enrolled in programs such as food stamps and are actually using them. So, all of these are really good protective factors that give a good foundation where continued improvements can be made. So, some of the stuff that's happening now, as we said earlier, you know, we're just starting to get some good data, we're also working on getting more data, and kind of digging deeper into some of the areas where we know there's problems, such as food security. And then, we've talked about the evaluation committee. We're hoping that by the end of the summer, we'll have that core set of indicators that we think are really important to follow over time. And then, this summer, there's a lot of exciting things happening with youth. There's an internship where they're gonna be learning how to do community organizing and mapping, and learning other skills. And then, there's a lot of ongoing planning activities and improvement efforts that are happening in the community. So, I think that while Delnort County has its challenges, I think it's really well-positioned for seeing some really positive changes over the coming years, and I look forward to helping assessing with that. So, I'll close with that, open it up to any questions or comments, and here's our website, where you can find a lot of our reports.
Jessica, I would just like to ask if we could get this in paper form?
Yes. You guys have a copy of the... Yeah, that has everything in it. Do you want the actual PowerPoint as well?
No, probably not. You've got all the stats in this.
Yeah, that has everything I've shown today, plus a whole lot more.
So, you're gonna continue on monitoring and collecting data. Is this because there's gonna be programs that are gonna be implemented, to see if we're improving or not improving? I mean, it appears to me, though, poverty seems to be the single biggest indicator that where the problems are.
Yes, and yes, you are correct. And, you know, we've got our challenges, and we're gonna need to meet those challenges. We understand that poverty, and the other major concern that our community had was alcohol and drug abuse, that these are significant issues for our community, yet we believe that we can address the circumstances around those, and that we can produce better health outcomes. Poverty, to some extent, is gonna be outside of everyone's control, but to the extent that we can impact it. In education, that's where education is so critical, because the pathway out of poverty for the children that are living in poverty is education. And there's a great deal of work going on. Mike and I were just in a meeting the other day, where business community is being engaged with the education community, and they're having a very lively discussion about how they can support each other. So, those children coming through the system have internships, and are excited about the future, and have job possibilities, and are educated well enough where our local employers would love to hire them. So, there's a lot going on there, and I think we're gonna hear a lot more from the school district in the next few months about their planning.
Just on that same thing, and I had talked to Connie about this at the economic summit, too. Looking at tracking the kids all the way through, and exactly, because you always get this, you know, we have so many kids that went to college, but it doesn't say, did they finish? Did they get a 2-year? Did they get a 4-year? Do they, and what are they doing now? Those are, because I would think even like building curriculum within the school district and tying into the business community, saying, you know, if we can track these kids, and you could probably even go back over the history of the school, and not make it a really drawn-out process, but to see, how effective is the curriculum? I mean, there seems to be such a focus on a college prep academy at the high school, and that experiment hasn't worked, because it started when I was in high school, and it's still happening, and you still only got 10% of the kids supposedly going on to college, which doesn't mean necessarily they're finishing. To me, how do you, I don't know how you set a baseline or determine if it's effective or not, unless you're tracking that, and that's where I think California Endowment should be, funding, you know, the project to actually research what happens with these kids going forward, and are we preparing them for life? Because, you know, they're not getting any living skills. You know, you got some really sharp kids coming out, and they do not know how to manage a checkbook, or a credit card, or any personal finance, which is not a requirement to graduate, geometry is, which I've not used geometry since I was in high school. But that seems like it would be a key thing going forward, to say, if we're gonna change it going forward, then we need to know how effective it is.
Right.
And also, that's a database going forward.
Yeah, and I think the population is small enough up here that, you know, that potentially could be done, to try and track all those kids.
That's why the evaluation of data is critical, because we really want to know what's effective, where things are working, so we can support those things, or change the things that are not working, rather than just go by stories that you've heard, or individual circumstance, but really look at hardcore data.
Well, the other thing that it pointed out is the sustainability issue.
Yes.
Whether it's early childhood education, and some of the early successes, I think, maybe turning the curve on teenage pregnancy, and then also talking about nutrition issues. As soon as you realize a little bit of a success, you leave that, and you go somewhere else, and then we see what the data tells us, it bounces right back, where you have teenage pregnancies are up, and prenatal care is way down. It's frustrating, you know, so I know you can't do everything for everybody all the time, but this kind of information that reinforces it, yes, you have a success here, but you really need to put the pedal to the metal and continue with that success, to drive it in the direction you want to get it to, rather than just abandoning it and going on to something else. Engaging partners, I guess, is where I'm coming from again.
Which is really critical to all this work, engagement of partners, and really, you know, when we leave, we don't want to create a circumstance when the endowment leaves in 10 years, I mean, when they're gone, the work is over. And we go back to this data that you saw today. That's exactly what we want to avoid. We need to learn what works, and be able to find ways to sustain it over time, and a lot of it is gonna have to be driven by the community, by community partnerships. All of the answers are not gonna be in this room, they're gonna have to be out in the community. So, that's what this 10 years of organizing, and working with neighbors, and working with youth is all about. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Richard.
I would like to make a suggestion. I would hope that the doctor would send copies of this report to my city council, because I believe without a community effort, all what you do sometimes doesn't work. Also, I'd like to make a suggestion that a copy of this report be placed in the Delnort County Library, so residents of this community could go read it. Because I definitely believe that it takes a community to build a village. And a lot of times in Delnort County, that just doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else want to comment on the presentation? Thank you very much. Very informative. Okay, finally, to the consent agenda.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jeremy? Oh, any public comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Elliott Elliott, I live in the county. I just wanted to comment on my support for item number 12 and number 24, the resolution number 2011-042. I believe this would improve the area for public use and increase opportunities for community involvement. I also think it would clean up the area, and help stop the homelessness and the dumping of living in that back area there. I think it could also raise funds for our community, the possible revenue generated from corporate sponsorship, and signs for businesses and ad space at the park. Thank you.
Any other comment? Oh, Richard, you already commented.
Well, I would...
Well, nothing.
The consent agenda... Oh, that was on the presentation, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd like to talk about the city's effort to build a park behind Safeways.
What item are you addressing on the consent agenda?
12.
12.
I hate to say this, but until my county and my city writes a letter to the State Fish and Game Commission about the condition of their property behind Safeway, I think my city is making a mistake, because you can't put lipstick on a pig to improve the McNamara property, until you clean up the area that the state owns. And unfortunately, the state hasn't provided enough funding to the county to maintain that area over the years. It once was a beautiful park. And what worries me, my city can build more ball fields and a park, but if they can't fund the maintenance because of the lack of revenue, my city doesn't have, another example of putting lipstick on a pig. So, I would encourage this body to step forward, to write a letter to Fish and Game, to do something about the area behind Safeways.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, Jeremy, I think you can hold on now.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on items number 13 and 22.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number 11.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. And of that, I would like to have Supervisor Finnegan read the resolution.
With pleasure. There's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnort, State of California, in support of the Delnort Lighthouse Community Center. It's Resolution 2011-043. Whereas, Delnort Lighthouse Community Center is a new 501(c)(3) public charity, nonprofit organization that provides support services to families in Delnort County. And whereas, Delnort Lighthouse Community Center vision, the statement is guiding people through life's challenges. And whereas, the Delnort Lighthouse Community Center mission statement is empowering people of all ages to be successful in all aspects of life, through comprehensive community services provided through the agencies using Delnort Lighthouse Center. And whereas, Delnort Lighthouse Community Center is a multicultural and multi-generational organization, and whereas, the Delnort Lighthouse Community Center offers services to families in the Burt's Track and throughout Delnort County. And whereas, the Delnort Lighthouse Community Center provides services to Delnort families with food, clothes, and a safe place for all people, and is a gathering place for community activities. And whereas, Delnort Lighthouse Community Center provided services are supported solely by many generous donations of service in kind and donations in kind, plus small grants, current services can continue as funding is procured. And whereas, since Delnort Lighthouse Community Center and Delnort County became partners to develop a park with a playground for children in the Burt's Track, and whereas, Delnort Lighthouse Community Center shares, or continues, to shine and guide people through life's challenges in all aspects of life, now therefore be it resolved by the Delnort County Board of Supervisors, that the Delnort Lighthouse Community Center be recognized for its achievements, its generosity, and community partnerships, passed and adopted this 12th day, well, actually, it's not the 12th day now, it's the 28th day of July 2000, of June, rather, 2011, by the following poll vote unanimously. With that, I'd like to present this. Millie, to you, and invite you to address this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your partnership in the things that have happened in our area, specifically with the playground, we see young children on the...
day of July 2000, of June, rather, 2011, by the following poll vote unanimously. With that, I'd like to present this, Millie, to you, and invite you to address this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your partnership in the things that have happened in our area, specifically with the playground. We see young children on the everyday and families of all different walks of life, and it's really a meeting place in our community as well as the center. And I commend you right now, I am listening to things in the federal and state level from the different agencies I'm affiliated with, that we are at a time of creative finances and that we are at a time right now where we have pulled together in the past with the tsunamis that have come through our area and the flood and clamour, and, you know, we can do it again. And so if we work together, and that is our goal out at the center, is that we would become a place where all people are welcome and that we can work together to make things happen. We have added a community garden, and we have just a couple plots that are open for that yet. In addition to that, well, then we are partnering with other agencies, and as agencies are losing funding, actually, there's more agencies ready to step up and want to be a part of the center. So it continues to grow, and we're excited about that. I would like to thank my board. I have John Gying, Jody Appel, Doreen Wells, Delphina Danner, Kathleen Rogers, and we have advisors Randy Bancroft and Rosa Lee Lee Berry. In addition to that, I'd like to thank the agencies who have been coming into the center and the different things that they have done to facilitate the center growth. We have incredible volunteers out there right now. We have 21 core volunteers, but additional ones throughout the community, including the Women's Club, often has volunteers that are available and have facilitated things at the center. A lot of different groups have come in and have helped in the different activities in the ecumenical community as well as the secular community. We currently have a Fisherman's Fund, which is ecumenical and agency-driven, and we are providing funds for the fishermen who are coming in to receive services, something you may not have known about. And I especially want to thank all the community for their generous donations. We have had service in kind and donation in kind to take and bring it where it is today. As recently as last week, we probably had 150 young people there that painted the building, that repaired a room that needed to be totally remodeled all in one week's time. We had the curbs painted for ADA compliance, and so it just continues to become a higher standard, and we hope that it will continue to be a lighthouse to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. That's wonderful.
I know we just passed an ordinance, but it, there's no way it could have said enough for the work that is being done out there, that, Millie, I guess you and your husband, Scott, really allowed it to happen and fostered the partnerships, and the Burt's Track has been transformed, but it also carries into the entire community. It would take 15 minutes to list all the partners and all the programs that goes on out there, but just thank you very, very much. Fantastic partner. Thank you.
Job well done for a local that came home and got to work. Thanks.
Okay, regular items, budget transfers, item 31 and 32.
Move to approve items 31, 32, which are listed as 06-03 and 06-04.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jeremy?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. Comment on these two items. There ain't none motion. Carries legislative and budget issues.
Well, with the advent of technology, I can tell you that there will be a vote at 4 o'clock today, hopefully, or depending on what side of the fence you sit on, both the Senate and Assembly have put together a budget package of eight bills that would be voted on at 4 o'clock unless there's some additional time that's needed to analyze those or discuss those. So at some point, we could probably see a budget actually voted on by the, in front of the governor tomorrow, I would suspect. And here, what it says is that it would back the VLF and some subvention money for public safety as well as the AB 109 package, which is the, going through at this point probation. And of course, there would be some attachment on the VLF for the vehicle license fee, which would be an additional charge, I think, of $14. That was on there before. And I think the unfortunate part is it isn't both parties coming to the table, because I think that that's where you get a more sustainable budget, but at this point, this will give us something to react to and hopefully locally then be able to put together a package for the board. And many of these bills we'll be looking at today. I would suspect Clint's probably looking at the ones that affect the sheriff at this point, and we'll sit down with, Tom's probably already on the AB 109, if he hasn't already seen it. And the homicide reimbursement that we've been requesting is AB 116, and it is in there right now. So at that point, yeah, we'll be looking at this for the next couple of days. If it is passed, then obviously we will be coming back, perhaps every board meeting to have some discussion regarding alternatives and solutions. Capital projects?
Capital projects.
Prop 40, we had our final inspection, and we'll be having a discussion with the State of California in regards to the final inspection. Once we get the letter, there are a few things that we believe were not in the agreement that the inspector has pointed out, he believes need to be done. They revolve around ADA compliance and securing picnic tables, of all things, actually pinning them to the ground, which wasn't part of the agreement. And as far as the ADA compliance, you know, all of the plans and specs that went forward met the requirements according to our building department and our engineers. So we'll be having that discussion, but I think some of that might revolve around not wanting to actually pay that in this fiscal year and bumping it over to next fiscal year. Not so sure. It is Prop 40 money, so I don't know how that affects. The RFP is going through the final checks, I believe, at this point, to get out for Battery Point, and we'll be going forward with an RFP for Point St. George for those final tasks. And construction on the town site should begin on July 1st. It's completed by, I think they gave us till October 31st. That one should be done and ready for any type of fishing, hopefully in the fall if we can get it all done.
I have a question about Florence Keller. And I was under the impression that when we put in the play yard, that was also for the campers.
It is.
But now, if the group picnic area is rented, the campers are being told they can't play there, and I don't know if we need to put a little barrier that makes it so the kids that are camping there can come and play, or what we're going to do there.
This revolves around how the policy was dealt with in the past. You had a few items or features out there that were usually used by the people using the kiosk and the picnic area. Obviously, that playground is a lot more attractive than it was before, and we're going to get people from the camping, and we have had this discussion about you can't not allow people to use the playground, so it's a matter of internal policy, and we're going to have to deal with that and make sure. The camp host has been trying to adhere to the rental of the picnic area along with the ropes course, along with the playground, and so we're, we have some growing pains. We'll have to deal with those. He's been doing an excellent job. I think you probably saw the letter to the editor about how he handled one of our campers that unfortunately got taken advantage of out there, that somebody rifled through their campsite, and the gentleman's name is Tony, and he did an excellent job and took care of the camper, and he's very much into staying on top of things. And when the security of the campground came up in regards to this inspection, the first thing we thought is we have gates and we have a camp host, so any more security, yeah, somebody could run off of the picnic table, but we have somebody out there, so I'd like to note that he is doing an excellent job.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Madam Chair?
I do have one item. I'd like, I expected when we made the request to solid waste, we'd have response by today. That was actually in the original ordinance or resolution we passed, so I'd like to list it on the agenda for July 26th, which is two meetings out, as a discussion of possible action.
Okay.
I also had a quick question. Did you want to address the maps in Legislative Items, Jay? The redistricting ones?
What?
The redistricting maps that weren't included in their packet?
Yes, they haven't changed, so these will just be updated maps.
Okay, so it's just information. Okay.
Are you talking about the senatorial and assembly and congressional, is what she's talking about?
Are you talking about the local or the state?
The ones that are under the state.
Okay, those are the state and congressional.
They have maps?
Yeah, those are legislative.
Okay, all right.
We will, we may see changes, but it looks like they're locked in at this point.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.